Good evening. Thank you for coming. Let's open the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk?
This is the roll call for the City Council and Authority. Councilmember Authority Member Johnson?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Krist?
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Call to order the Housing Authority meeting. City Clerk, roll call please.
Roll call for the Housing Authority. Authority Member Harvey?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Krist?
Present.
Chair Zetto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And tonight, we have Pastor Chris Johnson. But before you do, this is an historic night. We won the Rubin case. We now can pray to whoever we want to without any fear of going to jail, which I'm deeply gratified for. It's actually a historic day. But so we're honored to have you doing the invocation.
Well, let me just say, it is a tremendous privilege, actually, to pray on this specific night. I had no idea that that was coming or that that had just been decided. I had decided when I came tonight to just honestly, I know most of you pretty well, and you're my friends. And I just want to tell you that I'm proud of our city. I'm incredibly appreciative of the work that you do, and especially the members of the City Council. I know that your heart and soul is invested in this city. And I just wanted, for one pastor in this town, to come and express appreciation sincerely for your work, and also for fighting that fight so that we can pray here. And I look at the words behind Councilman Smith's head, "In God We Trust", and we do trust in him as a city and as a people. And so let's pray and acknowledge his presence. Father, thank you this evening, even for that victory that was won in court. And I pray, God, that would have ramifications not only for the city of Lancaster, but all over the state of California, that people could gather under their constitutional right and pray. And Father, tonight, we come and ask your blessing on this City Council meeting. We thank you for the good work that you're doing in this city through our leaders. Father, I am absolutely convinced that you have chosen each one of these men and women to lead us. Father, I thank you for the excellence and the commitment that they demonstrate in that process. And I pray that they would know that the churches of the Antelope Valley support them in their endeavors. Father, I pray specifically for this meeting tonight, that you would move and work and give your wisdom and your direction. Father, we're grateful for this land and for this city that we get to be a part of. And we pray your blessing upon it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. Remain standing, please. Place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't have my presentations. I have two presentations, but I don't have them up here. There's two young people out there that I think would like to get their... All right, we'll come back to it. Okay, let's go to item three on the presentations. Ramon Roberts? Okay, there you are.
Here I am. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and everyone else here present.
Good evening.
So just wait for my slides to come up. So who am I, where am I from, what do I do? So I am with the Small Business Development Center. You all, as the City of Lancaster, have been supporting us for a few years now. We had, I think, the best year that we've had since an organization supporting the Antelope Valley in 2012. So I wanted to come and report, kind of give you an update of what we did last year, and then talk about some things we're doing this year and what we can look forward to when I stand up again here in 2014. So who are we? Why does the SBDC exist? Well, the SBDC exists because, as we all know, small business is one of the powerhouses that makes us such a great nation. And so I'm sure we've all seen a lot of these numbers, but we just have this just so we can, again, emphasize from our perspective, we believe small business is what causes communities like ours to thrive. So we are passionate about supporting the small business community. We're passionate about seeing numbers like this increase, stay strong, and not dwindle. So what do we do? And this is where people often look at me kind of cross-eyed when I say we are free of charge. And we're free of charge because of cities such as yourself, City of Lancaster. We have great support from Santa Clarita, Palmdale, San Fernando Valley, agencies in those areas that allow us to offer a no-cost, no-charge service to our small business in the community, and of course, the SBA. And I'll get into a little bit more of that later. How do we do that? Here is kind of our four core areas. We do free one-on-one business consulting. We have a myriad of business advisors, consultants, businesspeople who work really hard, who have a great track record in business. So we sit down with small business owners, work with them, and we walk them through their daily business needs. We do workshops and trainings, events, and of course, we have a myriad of resources because we are a part of the SBA. And so because of that, that opens us up to provide our small business community with some resources, connections, relationships that they may not get on their own. So we are accredited, and as I mentioned, we are part of the SBA, Small Business Administration. So that is kind of our parent organization, if you will. Our sister organizations are those such as SCORE and the Women Business Development Center as well. Just real quick about us, we serve San Fernando, Antelope Valley, Santa Clarita Valley. Our main office is in College of the Canyons, but we do have two locations up here. Our main locations at the University of Antelope Valley. And that's a thank you to the Johnsons for partnering with us and allowing us to provide our services in your facilities. As you can see there, we also have other sister SBDCs scattered throughout the greater Los Angeles area. A quick summary of what we offer, our expertise, what I'd like to point out, and I get into a little bit, a little bit later. We have a restaurant specialist, we have a legal specialist, we have a human relations specialist. So as we have grown, in particular, over the past year of 2012, we've added specialists to our cadre so that we can provide more unique and specific services to those in the community. Just some of our local organizations that we partner with on a regular basis. The WorkSource Center, we recently had a QuickBooks training class, which was free of charge for those members. We had, I think it was 19 people show up. The idea was, we train them in QuickBooks. They can either go work for a local employer or start their own bookkeeping business. So we didn't just give them training, we helped them to make that next step. So if they wanted to start their own business, we went through with the business plan process, helped them find the right connections to get a bookkeeping business going. So that was with the WorkSource Center. All righty, here's the good stuff. So last year's results. We consulted with over, close to 870 small businesses, trained over 3,000 entrepreneurs. We saw an increase in sales with those businesses we worked with of over 19 million. 937 jobs were retained, 800, excuse me, 84 jobs created, 53 business starts, and we helped companies get over 12 million in cash for their businesses. So if we just kind of break down by the numbers, for every four and a half hours that we meet with someone, a job is created or retained. $4,720 in new sales for every hour of consulting delivered, $32 in new sales for every dollar invested by the SBDC, over 3,000 in new capital raised for every hour of consulting delivered, $21 of new capital raised for every dollar invested in SBDC. We roughly saw one new business start a week. Now, that is scattered throughout our region. Here's kind of a breakdown of the Antelope Valley, close to 700 hours, almost 500 consulting sessions. That is an interesting number, change in sales. It's not quite that. It's about a little less than half, but hopefully this year, we'll see that. I apologize for having the wrong number. Jobs retained, 116, jobs created, 84, business starts, six, and we had close to a million in cash infusion for our local small businesses. And we're already in the process of working with a few different small businesses where we're going to see that cash infusion number triple, hopefully, by next month. A couple of our other key programs, I just want to camp out on our Entertainment and Arts Industry Initiative. So we have been developing our services to provide local artists, actors and actresses, et cetera, geared toward the entertainment industry. As we often know, sometimes the creative types are really good at their craft, but when it comes to numbers, when it comes to the business aspects, there's a little bit of a challenge at times. We've been partnering with actors, we've been partnering with artists, et cetera, helping them kind of formulate what they do so that they can benefit from it, so that we no longer have the phrase starving actor or artist. Another program that we're, I'm particularly excited about, a passion of mine, is our Young Entrepreneur Program. So toward the end of last year, we worked with Eastside High School, and I sat on a business plan competition board. I am working with that same class and same instructor again this year. I made a presentation, actually, yesterday to the class. We're working with them to develop a business plan, and they're going to do a business plan competition, in the hopes is that we'll get that in more of our high schools here in Lancaster in the fall. We're also working with a couple of our local charter schools, ILE Lancaster. We're helping fifth and fourth graders start their own business. So I'm of the mindset, if we tell them they can do it, let's watch them surprise us. So we're having a great relationship there, so we're hoping to actually have an entrepreneur fair at ILE Lancaster in June of this year. And then finally, we're in conversations with Learn for Life, and so having some great discussions with them about things we want to see happen through their charter schools as well. And just lastly but not least, Advanced Technology Incubator. So that kind of consists of not only technologies, but our relationships with the investor community, and in particular, angel investor groups that are down below. So we're in negotiations and talks, if you will, of several angel groups that are looking to come up to this area in particular to hold events, to invest their funds, because we have the one thing that they are having a hard time finding down below, and that's land. So they believe there is space to grow, space to do new things, and they are interested to see the type of entrepreneurs we have in the Antelope Valley that we have in this region. So they are very excited to kind of do something a little bit new and different than what they're used to, and so I will provide updates as those happen. And then finally, our Center for International Trade Development. We've partnered with the ports, and we have hosted a series, I believe it was an eight-session series, of free trainings, very high-quality, top-notch training provided by the port and their various partners to help small business owners really develop their international trade programs. So again, these are free of charge, they've all been packed, and so I'm trying to bring them up here. They've been in the Santa Clarita region for the past couple months. Just a quick look at our partners here, and then some of our secondary and tertiary partners as well. And as I mentioned, our service location, University of Antelope Valley, and the South Valley WorkSource Center. And then we have, we're at the College of the Canyons campus in Santa Clarita, and have a few different locations in the San Fernando Valley. And so ladies and gentlemen, that is my report to you from the Small Business Development Center. Again, I just want to thank you for your support of us, and please feel free to utilize us as a service to support and help the small business community. Are there any questions, thoughts, comments?
Actually, I have a comment. Ramon, we'd just like to applaud you. SBDC is a wonderful organization that does so much for so many people, but you truly have to have passion to make that happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have that passion. You've made such a difference in so many people's lives, and you are definitely there 110% for them, and I've seen that. And you've changed people's lives for the positive, and I thank you for that. When these people come back and they say they have a job or they are able to start a business with your guidance and your passion and your belief in them, and that's what makes a difference. But we feel that SBDC is absolutely amazing for our community, and it's what we stand by, which is creating jobs.
Thank you.
So thank you for everything you do and continue doing for us.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Still moved? One favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'm abstaining. Ms. Zetto? We don't have a minister. Okay, good. All right, good. Never mind. Anything to pull on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Any speaker cards?
Yes.
One second. Marvin, you just needed to turn it on.
That way it exists.
Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking tonight on the bikeway that we have installed on Valley Central Way, and I wanted to speak on it before we paid the contractor for doing the job. You know, I consider it personally a hazard. I mean, it's impressive, the color of the bike lane is nice and everything, but for example, when you pull out of the Walmart parking lot, you have to edge out into Valley Central Way to see if there's any oncoming vehicles. And then you're looking both ways and hoping that you don't run into a bicycle person. So I don't know if we can condense that bike path or what, but I mean, right now, I consider it a hazard and a nuisance. Because also, like, if you're coming from Lancaster Boulevard and you make a left on Valley Central and you want to go into the parking lot, there's only one lane, because nobody wants to get into the bike lane and get sighted. So I would hope that the council would consider maybe narrowing the bike lane or something and giving us back the street on Valley Central Way. Thank you.
Guys better not mess with my bike lane. Mr. No Name? Mr. No Name left? Okay, good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve the consent calendar is currently comprised?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, let's open the public hearing. PH1, City Clerk? Any communications?
None, other than what the speaker cards you have in front of you.
Okay, thank you. And who's presenting? Mr. Lukey?
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. The issue that is before you tonight is the review and consideration of a comprehensive revision to the city's residential zones. The residential zones are part of the city's development codes that implement Lancaster's vision statements, plans, and policies. And some of those plans and policies that it would specifically implement include the city's general plan, the adopted architectural design guidelines, and the master plan of trails and bikeways, all of which the council has reviewed and approved over the past several years. By implementing these plans, the residential zoning code provides for orderly development, land use compatibility, and protects and promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. And I would also add that we believe that the residential zones as drafted are a forward-looking approach, and they are much more about the future than they are about the past, much in the same way that those vision statements and plans already adopted take the same outlook and approach. The residential zones basically consist of four components: the types of uses that are allowed, the development regulations, the site plan requirements, and the operational standards for specific types of land uses that may locate in residential areas, such as home occupation permits. The draft residential zones that are before you tonight are the product of an extensive and collaborative preparation process. It actually began in June 2011, when staff prepared an internal administrative draft that all of the affected departments of the city reviewed. From that, we released a draft for public review in January 2012 that also included, as you can see on the timeline, an active outreach effort. The Planning Commission itself began their review in May of 2012. Ultimately, this review included five public meetings at which they received testimony and discussed the draft ordinance, a tour that they took in July of two residential developments within the city that are utilizing solar energy components, and that gave them the opportunity to discuss with those builders the various aspects of solar energy installations on residential units. And in addition, the commission directed staff to meet with representatives of residential builders and the BIA to obtain further input on the draft ordinance. Ultimately, on January 28th, the commission voted by a 5-0 vote to recommend to the council approval of the residential zones that are before you. As I mentioned, we believe that the residential zones that are drafted are a forward-looking approach, and as such, they revise some of the existing standards that we have had for several years, in fact, several decades within this city. For example, the draft ordinance requires enhancement and the placement of activity areas in the front of residences through the use of porches and other types of enhancements. Why did we ask or propose to do this? It's not only that they make for more attractive buildings and neighborhoods, which they do, but they also encourage walking, they promote safer neighborhoods because they create eyes on the street through having activity in the front of the house. It's an important part of crime prevention through environmental design, as well as health and safety. Another thing that the residential zones do as drafted is they allow for greater flexibility in site design and unit types. And we're hoping that this is going to lead to really, truly mixed and walkable neighborhoods. And it does a great benefit to the development community because it gives them greater flexibility in the types of units and the mixing of those units that they can provide. We will have a better range of housing styles and types and choices as a result of these This flexibility will also allow for the implementation of design features that improve walking and biking opportunities, certainly a goal of the city's master plan of trails and bikeways. And while this can take many different design forms, the real important concept is illustrated for you on the slide, is that the connections between neighborhoods and nearby uses are required to be provided as a part of these code changes. And that, of course, leads to more direct and better walking and bicycling opportunities. Now, one of the most discussed requirements that exists in the draft residential zones is the one that mandates solar energy. As currently drafted, the ordinance would establish a baseline requirement in which a minimum amount of solar-generated electricity must be provided for all new residential units receiving building permits after January 1st of 2014. And as shown on this chart, this baseline minimum would vary depending on the zone classification and the type of residential development. The ordinance allows for this requirement to be averaged across an overall development. This was done in order to make sure that there weren't individual situations where maybe the orientation of a house or a lot prevented the installation of solar on that specific location. That developer could still meet this requirement by making sure that the average is maintained. We believe that this requirement, which we believe is the first in the nation, makes sense for the city of Lancaster. It provides benefits to the residents in the form of reduced energy costs, it reduces the need for using fossil fuels to create and generate electrical power, and it furthers Lancaster's efforts to become a net-zero city. Some of the other features that I would like to highlight about the ordinance include the issue of infill. One of the major issues discussed in the city's general plan is how to encourage better use of our infill sites. This particular residential zone draft would allow for development on infill sites of up to eight units to the acre while maintaining and meeting development and design guidelines without requiring a general plan amendment or a zone change. This is actually something directly that we heard from our building community over the past several years. The draft ordinance would also make it easier to create accessory dwelling units within single-family residences. One of the things that has really become more common, and we've heard from our residents, is their desire to have this opportunity to house elderly family members or other relatives that may need housing and that they want to be close to for various reasons, be they physical age or disability or other reasons. We believe that this is kind of a cutting-edge approach, but we are noticing that certain builders, including Lennar Builders, which this is actually a picture of one of their models, are already doing this in other communities, and they are looking at rolling it out in more and more of their projects because of the popularity that it has with home buyers and the benefits that it provides for multi-generational types of families. Finally, one additional thing that I would like to highlight is the ordinance gives greater flexibility for live-work arrangements for residential units that directly front primary arterial streets. And I'm sure as you think about areas around town, such as parts of Avenue L or 20th Street West, where you have houses that front directly onto these major streets, we would like to have the opportunity for certain types of restricted commercial activity a little more advanced than what a home occupation would be, but not something that would create a real distraction for the neighborhood. We would like to give those owners the opportunity to do those live-work arrangements. And we think that in the long term, this actually provides an avenue to transition some of these uses where heavy street traffic may preclude, in the long term, the use of them for single-family residential-type uses particularly. Staff is recommending to you that you introduce ordinance 989 as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I would also like to point out that Mr. Jim Vos, the chairman of the Planning Commission, is also in attendance should you have any questions for him regarding the commission's deliberations on this draft ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
I have one. In talking to the people at KB, they were pointing out that it should be 1.4 because of certain subsidies that are available. Did we look into that?
Yes, that was actually one of the items that we discussed in drafting the requirement. And you are correct. What KB Home was able to enlighten us on is... And you are correct, what KB Home was able to enlighten us on is that you really need a 1.4-kilowatt system to take advantage of the rebates and other things that accrue to that. However, in looking at trying to provide this as an average, the ultimate decision of staff from a recommendation standpoint and also the Planning Commission was that in allowing the average, it would still adjust for those situations where you may not be able to provide solar on a particular house. And the builders actually gave us two instances where that may not be desirable. One, the orientation of the lot or the design of the unit itself prevents someone from actually putting that much solar on that particular location. Or there are buyers who, for whatever reason, there's certainly a minority of buyers, but they just don't want a solar energy system. They believe it may cause other kinds of problems or other issues that they don't want to deal with. So the flexibility that's still inherent in the overall average was something that we thought was appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose changing the zoning laws right now. I think that the problem is not the future, the problem is right now, and we should address the problem right now, existing housing in Lancaster. You see, the core of the city being decimated by people putting up fences in their yards, having multiple people live in their dwellings. I think the emphasis should be to improve the existing housing in the city before we focus on future development. Another thing about this ordinance that the staff member mentioned, all the hearings that have been held on this, we have a couple of attorneys on the council, and I'm sure that they wouldn't go through ordinance or contract without going through it page by page, line by line. And I suggest that the council go through this document, these zone changes, line by line, page by page, because I found in one page where the planning director is giving discretion to make decisions, the decision power should rest with the elected representatives in the city. And before we approve any zoning changes, we need to go through it line by line, page by page, so we know what we're doing. And I oppose the solar being forced upon people. When I moved up here, I had an opportunity to get a KB home, and I chose not to get a KB home. I chose to get a house that had been built in the 50s because that's the type of dwelling I wanted. I would resent in the future if I had to come and get a house that had solar in it, because a lot of people like me are skeptical about having solar panels around. Finally, this is the issue of the elderly, providing places for the elderly. Well, a lot of people in this town do it already. They convert their garages into apartments for the elderly. That goes back to my focus. We need to save the community now. Don't worry about the future because you can change the zoning ordinance as like you do all the time. We need to preserve what we have now. So I would oppose this and table it, and if you are going to vote for it, please go through it line by line, page by page. Thank you.
Thank you. Marta Brown?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am Marta Golding-Brown. I am the director, the Annapolis Valley Director of the Building Association Los Angeles Ventura Chapter, and I'm here representing the Building Industry Association and the 1,000-member companies in the housing industry, construction trades, and affiliated businesses throughout Southern California. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you regarding the Lancaster residential zones update, and I appreciate the time and energy that the planning staff, the Planning Commission, and you now the council have taken in formal meetings and in private meetings that we've had multiple with your planning staff and public work staff on this ordinance. We've worked very hard with that, with making changes and revisions in the ordinance for something that we thought would be really a good, workable ordinance for the city. However, tonight I stand before you in opposition to the approval of the ordinance due to the solar mandate that is a part of and included in the Lancaster residential zone update. I'm sorry. The requirements, I'm having very bad allergies today. The requirements as listed in the zoning ordinance will increase the cost of the house, not substantially, but it will increase the cost of the house in addition to the other ordinance objects and changes that have been made, will increase the cost of the house as well. While several of our members include solar options on their homes, many do not, and during the past five years, and it's been a very difficult time for our members to have projects penciled for new home construction in the Annapolis Valley. The solar mandate and the others will force the builders to include additional amenities on a home, forcing the price of construction to rise, thus increasing the amount of funding required for a new home to be profitable to build. In the last few years, the city's building incentive stimulus program has dramatically increased the ability of home builders to make projects work in the city. The reality is that the new home construction in Lancaster was assisted by this program, and we commend you for approving that. However, once the qualifying sites are built out, if this ordinance is approved, a home will now cost even more to construct in the city, possibly lengthening the housing recovery time within the city of Lancaster. Currently, there are a few of our large home builders offering solar systems on homes successfully, and one of these is KB, who we've discussed previously. And they have done that voluntarily at your request, at the request of the council, and been successful with that. The program has worked well for the city, for the home builder, and most importantly, for the home buyer, in part due to incentives currently available for these systems at the state level. The building industry believes this approach has and will continue to be successful. We also believe that requiring the option of solar on homes provides for more competition in the market and allows more homeowners to have choices when they're purchasing a new home. I just have one more paragraph. Thank you. The building industry understands the city is leading the charge on solar energy, and we support the use of green energy and a move to solar. However, it is still a very difficult economy, and several seemingly small increases in the cost to construct a home may tip the scales to the side of cost prohibitive. We appreciate your consideration for not including new mandates on the industry at this time, but by possibly delaying their approval or by removing them from the final ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Good evening. Congratulations, Mayor, on your victory. It is a joy to be here on this historic night. We're really talking about two historic events, and it's a joy. Pay attention.
Three historic events.
Pay attention, that's one of the things I say a lot around my house along with "I love you" and "Stop fighting." And when you spoke at the State of the City address and said that if there's one thing you should take from this today, it's Coursera, I listened to you, and I went home and I signed up for Scott Page's model thinking class, and I discovered that I'm a many-model thinker for about 40 years because I love the truth. The truth described by C. Z. Zane is correct and comprehensive knowledge, and it has to embrace all the forces and things and entities and things that you have to consider. So I don't fear the truth, I like to consider all the possibilities. And I'm sorry I'm late to this party with the development of the solar panels, that's kind of why I'm here. But the truth, I wanted to throw this in, you know, the rational models, the behavior models, he talks about truth being a free and transmitting power of feeling as well as an intellectual perception. So all these things get rolled in. And I'm talking about the solar panels and something that I would like us to consider in this ordinance. You know, I've had a little trouble with smoke lately, and it seems a little problematic for us to put in the solar panel requirement without considering what effect smoke has on these panels to decrease their efficiency. I always have you, remember you saying, "Show me the data, show me the data." I went online and I found this, and I emailed it to all of you, a model that was put together to simulate the effect, and there's three things considered, and the ash particles of dust are the worst. So I want us to see, you know, us to consider that. We live in an area where there's a lot of forest fires, and then it's a known event, you can go wash your panels off with distilled water, but in the event of a constant pollution from a fireplace, it just doesn't make any sense to consider that. I watched the show last night, The Thin Blue Line, where they take the physicist up to 60,000 feet, and you can see the thin atmosphere that covers this earth and how fragile it is. And if we're going to make history, let's put solar panels on and protect the environment and stop this insane notion that it's your right to have a smokestack in your house and pollute your neighbors with no consequence. I would like us to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Grooms?
Mayor Paris, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Larry Grooms. I've been a resident of Lancaster continuously since 1986, and I want to preface my remarks this evening by saying I'm representing only myself, nobody else. And I want to make clear also to you that I support solar energy. As a matter of fact, I support it so much that last year I had a solar system installed on my 48-year-old home, and it's working great so far, saving money, great. However, what I do not support, short of matters involving public health and safety, is government interference and intrusion into the private economic sector. The need for home construction in Lancaster is real and immediate. We need to restore our local economy and get our people back to work. I don't see the solar mandate as accomplishing either of those objectives. With that in mind, I have to ask, why should the city of Lancaster be seriously entertaining a mandate that will unnecessarily drive up costs for builders and home buyers alike and create another obstacle to keep builders away? There's every potential for unintended negative consequences in this solar mandate, which seems to be driven by the singular objective of attaining a title as the first zero-net city. Maybe I'm missing something, but I don't know what the payback is for the citizens of Lancaster with that title. Now, we know starting next January, all new residential and commercial buildings in California will have to be solar-ready in terms of their roof construction. Now, isn't that enough to encourage a rooftop solar installation? Why must we, as a city, overreach and put our city at a cost-competitive disadvantage by requiring an additional step of installing the full solar? If home-based solar is a good idea, and I think it is for many people, we don't have to mandate it. The marketplace will make it happen, and without any downside risk. What government entity mandated the telephone, the internal combustion engine, the refrigerator, or the home computer? A good idea in a free market is always going to take off and grow, and we're showing that here in Lancaster. Consumer choice, not government mandate, should determine our mix of energy sources. A market-based system is the only way to establish strong, diverse, and economically rational alternative energy solutions. We should allow liberty to flourish and markets to flourish, and unbridled American entrepreneurs will make all of that happen. I'm frankly surprised to be here this evening because it had never occurred to me that this council would entertain passing this kind of measure into law. I'll be shocked if you do. I urge you to think about your core values as you consider your vote. We all know Sacramento's been driving this action, but that doesn't mean we have to enable it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Jill Furtado?
Good evening, council. My name is Jill Furtado. I'm a Realtor with Prudential Trough Realtors. I also serve on the Board of Directors for our local association, the Greater Annapolis Valley Association of Realtors. First of all, I would like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Ludke and his staff, the way that you work with us as Realtors in the community. These ordinances, these zoning things, don't just come out of thin air. It's not just your idea, it's a teamwork effort for the betterment of our community. And also to the Planning Commission, I know a lot of work has gone into all of this. I'm here tonight specifically to speak on behalf of a client, not for the whole zoning changes, but with regards to the processing of wellness homes and the like, nonprofit-type facilities to support the community. They're talking about changing it from a more stringent CUP, but to go to a manager's review, and I support that change. I think that it still allows for due diligence on behalf of the community, and yet it also has a more reasonable timeframe for the process. So I speak in favor of that portion of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrew Nito?
I've spoken to this pulpit multiple times about my support of solar energy, and pretty much every time I have spoken with some form or other of reservation, most commonly about keeping in mind the preservation of our beautiful desert and the Joshua Tree specifically. For the first time that I have spoken on this subject, I speak in favor of the, well, I should change what I was about to say. I was about to say that this is the first time I would speak without reservation. In all the media that I've been reading, there doesn't seem to be any drawbacks. It's been my understanding, as I've been studying the subject, that the housing industry in the Annapolis Valley would continue full steam ahead as it has been doing, even with the solar panel requirement. With the direct testimony that I just heard from representatives in the industry, I am now not so sure of that. So I can't speak authoritatively about, I can no longer speak authoritatively about not having any reservations. What I can say is that, pardon me for a moment, what I can say without reservation is that I am fully in support of what the city has been doing in general to assist home developers in getting their projects more affordable. It was just a few council meetings ago that there was a presentation made on that very project, and I was greatly pleased to learn about that. So in the spirit of that particular project, in the ways the city has been helping developers make housing more affordable, we would look at the specific ways in which that has made housing more affordable, and take from that the essence of that elsewhere in the industry, not just the specific developers that are in partnership with the city on that project, and look at the effect of the solar requirement. Will the solar requirement impede on the nature of the efforts that the city has been engaging in to help bring development costs down so that we can bring housing construction and jobs back into our city? If so, if there will be an impediment on that, then we ought to table that consideration. If not, if there will not be any impediment on that, then absolutely full steam ahead. This city has a vision for solar power, and I am fully in favor of that vision. I should also speak on other items of the general plan. As I have been traveling around the country over the years, I have noticed several differences in the way that communities are developed elsewhere, Las Vegas, St. George, and I'm greatly impressed with what I see. I love when I go to St. George and I see neighborhood-oriented communities with communal greenery and easily walkable. And I am very happy to have seen pictures in the presentation earlier this meeting that are along that effect, to bring communal greenery and communal walking spaces to communities. So I strongly encourage the furtherance of that development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Move to approve, PH 1?
Yeah, one of the things before we call for the question or proceed, I think this is a time that we ought to thank Chairman Jim Vos and the Planning Commission, because I think they've built a lot of flexibility in here for a builder. I know that we had one individual or a couple speak, and it was more like the glass either half-empty or half-full. And when I saw these, and being a previous planning commissioner for close to 16 years, I was looking at the glass being half-full. Here we are giving developers the flexibility in regards to solar, and then we make all these adjustments and changes to the existing code and give some density bonuses, I mean, based on some of the information that I've read. So again, I think Mr. Vos and his team should be congratulated. So thank you, Mr. Vos.
I agree.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. You too, Fabian.
So with that, I'm ready to second the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. One of the issues raised by Mr. Grooms was, why do we want this title of being the solar capital of the world? And it really is the world. And we have been traveling, the three of us, four of us, literally around the world, giving speeches, talking about how we are the solar capital of the world. And Mr. Bozignian, would you tell us one of the benefits of that? That has finally come to fruition, but would not have come to fruition if we hadn't embraced this whole concept of alternative energy.
I'm going to give a greater report on BYD later, but BYD absolutely would not have happened without us going out, specifically the mayor, and talking about that, and talking about solar capital of the world. Neither would we have a Lancaster Power Authority, which generates revenue for the city and has saved the school districts $400,000 a year. We would also not have some of the projects we have, which we approved two months ago, which are going to create over $100,000 a year, every year for 20 years, for the city in revenue. That's just on the surface. Plus, it's put us on the map and it's given us an identity, and identity and branding are key. Those are just off the top of my head.
Thank you. Okay, we finally got our act together, and we have some presentations to make. Okay, Rachel Power, who has waited patiently now for over an hour. But didn't you find the whole council meeting just thrilling on the edge of your seat every second, better than a movie, wasn't it? Are your parents here? Want to come up? Oh, you're a Desert Christian. You must be a runner. Does their coach want to come up? He's your coach, right? Is he a good coach? This is Rachel Power. Rachel is a sophomore at Desert Christian High School and a member of the varsity cross-country and track teams, finished in third place in the 2012 cross-country state championship. She has earned all-state honors and is only the fourth Desert Christian female athlete to do so. Congratulations. You see these kids over on the west side. They're the ones in the heat of the day, running and running. And then you go, you shop, and you come back, and they're still running. I don't know how they do it. Rachel's third-place finish in the state meet is the highest finish by a Desert Christian high school athlete, either male or female. She finished second at the CIF Southern Section Finals, which named her to the All CIF Team. Rachel was named Antelope Valley Press Female Athlete of the Year, Desert Mountain Lake Most Valuable Player, and the team's Most Valuable Player in 2012. Rachel is named in the school record charts for cross-country three times in 2011 and nine times in 2012 on various cross-country courses. She competes in the 800-meter, 1600-meter, 3200-meter, and broke the school record for the 3200-meter with a time of 11 minutes 38 seconds and 9 tenths? Is that it? 9 and 1/100ths. Thought it was going to slide off, didn't you? You still do. Rachel has already received interest from UCLA, Pepperdine, Concordia, Laverne, where she would like to major in pre-law or biology. You know, you're just going down the right path. She volunteers her time at her church to help teach preschool classes, feed the homeless, and teach children at Vacation Bible School. And listen to this, a GPA of 4.24. That is truly remarkable. And doing all of that stuff, I don't know where you get the time. I bet she doesn't watch a lot of TV, does she? For her outstanding accomplishments in athletics and academics and leadership, we're presenting Rachel Power with the mayor's Athlete of the Month and $1,000 scholarship for when you go to Pepperdine. And now we have the SOAR High School Student of the Month, Skylar Suchowski. And do you have a parent with you? You know, the great thing about SOAR is the one thing we know is that they don't get there by themselves. The parents have to be involved. The parents have to be committed. They have to go through the interview process. They have to volunteer. It's a total family commitment, which absolutely pays off. We are number three in the state, is that right? Three in the state, no, seven in the state, three in the county. That's the top three in the entire county, better than Harvard-Westlake, better than Buckley. It's truly astonishing what they do over there. And Skylar has a 4.0 academic achievement in high school and college, because you do this, they do both at the same time. They do high school and college. He has a perfect attendance. Gee, I wonder if the two are related? He's in the I Club in 2009 to 2011, sophomore class vice president, junior class president, ASB secretary 2012 to the present. He's SOAR's ambassador 2011 to the present, soccer camp leader and trainer, and churchwana. You know, we keep seeing something in common. Church is always in common, and a lot of activities. It's never just one thing. It's astonishing what these kids are doing. He wants to major in chemistry, and he wants to have a career as a pharmacist. Skylar is a student who emulates the characteristics of a leader. He enjoys mentoring new freshmen at SOAR and helping youth at his church learn about God. He excels in both high school and college. How old are you? Seventeen? And how many college credits do you have? What does more than enough mean? More than 60? 50? That's amazing. Took me eight years to get 50 college credits, but that's another story. He exceeds in both high school and college his ROP class, medical clinical and medical science, and confirms his desire to pursue a career in the medical field. And we have a certificate for you. Thank you.
I think it's important for the public to understand that when Mayor Paris gives $1,000 scholarships to the youth that come up here, it comes out of his own money. So we should congratulate him for that.
Well, actually, it comes out of my wife and my's money.
In that case, that deserves a bigger applause, please.
Okay. NB1, New Business, okay. Kelvin, on New Business Item 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Two months ago in January, the city council had approved the formation of the Lancaster Tourism Business Improvement District, commonly known as the TBID. And since that time, the governing body for the TBID, which is the Lancaster Visitors' Bureau, also known as Destination Lancaster, has been working to prepare to do a number of marketing activities to really promote Lancaster as a destination point. And along with that, the Lancaster, or the Destination Lancaster Board also looked to amend its bylaws to actually go from a five-member board to a seven-member board by adding two members of the TBID, those being the participating hotels, to join them in making some of those decisions and how they go about the marketing. And they did that back in January, and the bylaws do require that both the city council as well as the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds Board ratify those amendment, the amendment to the Destination Lancaster bylaws. And that's what we're doing here tonight, is coming and bringing that back to you for your ratification and approval of the amendment to add the two additional TBID members. What I did want to do tonight, though, was also show you, in the short two months that they've been formed, what's currently occurring. And I'd like to introduce Luis Garabe, who's been the project manager with Destination Lancaster, to give you that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. While not much time has passed since the last time we were here in front of you today, I'm happy to report that we made some significant strides through our new partnership with this hotel group. Now, I'll be the first to admit that, as most new programs and projects, we've hit our fair share of obstacles. Building relationships and trust in such a short amount of time is sometimes difficult to do. But I truly believe that we've finally broken through and now have everyone in the team working together. This is much bigger than just a new partnership between Destination Lancaster and the hotels. For the first time ever, these hotels, as fiercely competitive as they are, are now working together to market the region and to promote all the great things happening to those outside of our area. So how are we starting to do this? Our first joint marketing piece will be this postcard, which highlights several of the major events happening throughout our community. Working with our community partners, that include the AV Fair, Lancaster Chamber of Commerce, Lancaster Jet Hocks, Willow Springs, and many, many more, collectively, we will begin distributing these through our respective networks. We'll also be promoting these through our newly established social media channels. This will help us extend our marketing reach even further, help us expand the Destination Lancaster brand, and most importantly, help drive traffic to our Destination Lancaster website. As we continue to explore new ways to improve the features of our functionality of our website, I'm proud to announce that we actually do have a new partnership with JackRabbit Systems. JackRabbit Systems is the travel and tourism industry's preferred choice for the development of custom travel search engines. JackRabbit has relationships already with all the major hotels and booking systems. Our hotels love JackRabbit Systems because unlike traditional booking engines, it gives us the control, the ability to control which hotels are featured. It requires no additional work by the hotels to upload inventory or even rates, and there's no additional back fees paid by the hotels. Plus, it gives us an opportunity to track the referrals that are generated from the Destination Lancaster website. Now, while this new booking feature will help strengthen the website, it's important to note that we're far from done in doing the website enhancements. We will continue to evaluate and improve the website's value to potential visitors. One of the other major components that Destination Lancaster will continue to work on is to find and create new events that will attract visitors to our area. Our team has already had several great meetings with various community partners, and we will continue to brainstorm and to find those unique opportunities and experiences for potential visitors and residents. At the end of the day, we all know that we're working towards the same goal, and that's really to attract new visitors to Lancaster's and increase the overnight stays here. We hope that through this marketing program, we will continue to positively promote our area so that more people can experience all the wonderful things that our community has to offer. As we move forward, we will continue and be more than happy to provide updates to the council on the group's progress. At this time, we'd be happy, more than happy, to answer any questions regarding the bylaw amendments or the progress that the group has made so far.
Where's the chamber in this?
We've had good meetings with them. They're promoting, we're doing some cross-promotion with them on their website now, and they're ready to go. They've actually asked us to come speak at one of their events, at one of their upcoming luncheons, to help promote the idea. And again, it's still kind of in the forming process right now, but we continue to have good meetings and--
Are they a partner?
Yes.
We're not stepping on their toes?
No, they've actually embraced the idea and are more than willing to help us promote the program and work with us to help strengthen our Destination Lancaster.
Any other questions? Move to approve? Michael Reeves?
I thought the presentation was very nice, and I'm all for promoting the city, but the key to promoting the city is having a transportation system that people can travel on. Now, I've gotten up here many times and talked about the shuttle buses, the dash buses, ready transportation for people can get around. We have attractions right now that people can't get to unless they have a vehicle. Why not? Why don't we emphasize and work on getting a shuttle bus system for this area? We can try it, because if we had a shuttle bus, people could go from one hotel to another, they could go to the attraction. Every single day on the street, I see empty AVTA buses. It's absolutely ridiculous, and it's a waste of federal taxpayer money and also the city and Palmdale's money to have empty buses all over the town when we can have shuttle buses coming every 15 minutes and a ready transportation for people. So I wish we would emphasize transportation on this before we go out and promote it. Let's create a viable transportation city, and then we can promote ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to respond to that.
Sure you want to?
We tried the shuttle buses. They didn't work. The AVTA has increased its ridership 35% by doing it the way that we're doing it now. Everything that we're doing, we do have a viable system. We had our TDA Article 8 hearings. No one complained about the system. It was, it seemed to be working well, but we've increased our ridership 35% by doing it the way that we're doing it now. So thank you for your comments.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Move to approve, NB1?
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous? Okay, council reports. Mr. Christ, Mr. Mann.
I just gave mine. I'd like Sondra Johnson. She was an alternate the other day. She participated in ridership. Can you tell us about your experience?
I hope you gave her some notice that you were going to ask her to--
I did not.
You did not. But I would be honored to. Thank you, Mar. Actually, it was a great experience. It was an ordinance that was going by that we were trying to see if we were going to keep or remove a specific route, correct? And during that time, we realized that in that neighborhood, there were a lot of Spanish-speaking individuals that are working in our community, that are really in need of the transportation. And what we saw was that they weren't able to express that to us there, but they were there to speak on behalf of it. Fortunately, we were able to have some translators there, and it worked out really well. And what it did for us there at the meeting is it made us realize that we need to have a little bit more of a diversity with a language barrier for our community here in the city of Lancaster. In that neighborhood, there were a lot of Spanish speakers that also had family members, and they would go to the hospital because of the, they were able to go to the hospital with their monthly checkups through the bus transportation. So it was really nice and honored for me to be there, to be able to translate and be able to speak for them on their behalf, to really express the need of them being able to use the transportation. So thank you, Mar, for allowing me to say that. That was a really awesome experience.
Thanks for being there. One of the other things that's going on at the AVTA is--
One of the other things that's going on at the AVTA is-
No, I'll pass on that.
Yeah, I'll wait till we vote.
Financing authority, no action. Lancaster Housing Authority, no action. Power Authority, no action. Successor Agency, no action. And we have Michael Reeves again for the AVTA report.
I appreciate Vice Mayor Chris quoting the statistics. Recently, the AVTA had an open house for the dedicated facilities. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to go to it because the CEO of the MTA was there, Art Leahy. And Art Leahy was one of my classmates from high school. We were on the cross-country and track team together, and his brother was on the school newspaper with me. And I'm sure Art would have remembered me because I was a troublemaker then, like I am now. But that said, Julie Austin quoted some statistics in the article, that was in the Valley Press. She said that they had nearly 270,000 commuters to and from the San Fernando Valley in Los Angeles. She said that's, and she talked about the increases from 2.6 million to 3 million. I requested Wendy Williams, the public relations spokesman, to clarify that, because I don't think they mean 3 million people have ridden the bus. I think they mean fares. It needs to be emphasized that the fares have increased, maybe not the ridership. The same, different people can get on the bus many times. So I need to, that needs to be clarified. Another thing I object to is the comments that were made last meeting, which I didn't attend, was that the city is supporting a transportation hub over in Palmdale. If it's where I think it is right now, that's a pretty ratty and seedy neighborhood to put a transportation hub.
They've got a great high school right down the street.
Why don't we have a transportation hub in Lancaster? I mean, we have the land over there where we could put up a facility. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Where was I?
Housing Authority.
Oh, okay. City Manager, any announcements?
Yes, we have two videos to show on the walking school bus and youth and government, but if I may, I'd like to give a brief report on BYD and approach the podium for that.
Yes.
I know the mayor wishes he could say more, and I wish I could say more, but we can report on where we're at now, and it's mainly what happened at Long Beach Transit Authority. And I want, I hope people understand how important that was. The Long Beach Transit Authority did a six-month RFP and evaluation process. They involved the FTA, they hired consultants, they hired investigators, inspectors actually, to go and look. And they awarded the largest electric bus purchase, 10 buses, in the nation this year to BYD. And BYD didn't get that because of anything other than they provide the best bus, electric bus, in America, right now. And I say "in America" because they're a Los Angeles-based company that's willing to invest in manufacturing in California when not very many people are. It's a big deal. It's a big deal for the city of Lancaster, and it's been reported that BYD has secured two properties here. But I think it's a bigger deal for California, because California gets an industry started here, the electric bus industry, that gets to start here. And it's starting here because of the efforts of Lancaster. In this job, it's, sometimes it's difficult not to be gratuitous, and I try to avoid that. And I think the mayor will agree, that there are times as mayor that he may get some accolades that maybe were a little more than his effort. But I'm here to tell you, straight up, BYD doesn't get that contract. They're not in California, and they're not in Lancaster, except for Mayor Paris. And I'm telling you that straight up, with the assistance of Mike Antonovich. There's 100 different things that he's been doing since 2009 to court Chinese businesses. There's a lot of them that I can tell you that were smart, that we didn't think of, that he thought of, but I'm not gonna tell you, because they are sort of our secrets on how we're gonna continue to get companies. But I'm here to tell you that we owe him a debt of gratitude for where we're at now, and I want to be the first to congratulate him, and hopefully not the last.
What he doesn't tell you is that him, along with the staff, they would come with me to Beijing, and Shenzhen, and Hong Kong, and they did it in coach. Now imagine, 16 hours in coach, many times, because their crazy mayor wanted to go to China. But they came, and they, each and every time, they put on a tremendous presentation, and we are going to see the benefits of this now for the next two, three decades. It is truly astonishing what is coming our way. And it really was because of the staff that was, that just dived in, and the council that supported it. I mean, most councils would be, would, it would be different than what I have here. I mean, this is really a great group to work with, even if Marvin's phone is ringing. Now, it was a little easier for Kitty to sit in coach, but I think that has something to do with her size compared to Mark's, but-
Imagine Vernon in coach.
Yeah, he didn't like it. He wasn't too happy. Anyway, we're excited about what's coming. I think all of you are gonna be really excited, too. Good things are happening.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who paid for your travel arrangements?
My wife paid for mine and Kitty's. The city paid for, but to be honest, I wasn't-
We got to visit in-
I wasn't in coach.
We got to visit in first class, and it's everything they say it is. We were kicked out after about 30 seconds, but it was a beautiful 30 seconds.
Beautiful 30 seconds.
Okay, we have-
We have two videos we'd like to show.
Yes, let's do that.
And I don't know which ones first, so we'll be surprised.
the opportunity to walk in a safe route that has been designated by the city, as well as the Lancaster School District. The purpose of the program is to promote health in our kids, to get them walking.
We're trying to encourage healthy, active lifestyles by walking to school instead of driving to school. And I think it shows the potential. I mean, you can see the crowd behind me. It shows a great potential for a program like this.
Well, we're so honored for the city of Lancaster to be part of such a great, great day. This is actually really showing how the community can come together and make our town a safe town. It's a great turnout. As you can see, we have so many parents that are involved, and the children are so excited to have that moment, not to just bond with their parents, but to also exercise with them at the same time.
And while they're queuing that up, it'd be remiss not to thank Dr. Prozern High Desert Medical Group, who sponsored it, and Danita Nguyen from the Antelope Valley High School District trustee, who was really a driving force behind it.
Mark, how do we promote more of that?
The School District actually is doing this as a showcase right now. They have a volunteer program, which they've given out to all of their parents, where they sign up, they will get tested, the city will run them through the background check, and then, starting in September, they wanted to do it at all schools. So really, what they're looking for is volunteers. We're gonna put it on our website, the high school districts put it on their website, as is the School District, and if they can get enough parents at the school level, they'll have every school have a walking school bus. It's real an amazing experience, Sandra.
Yeah, and their initial goal is to have it one day a week, so that it becomes a whole neighborhood, you know, experience. And ultimate goal is to have it every day, Monday through Friday. But we're gonna start off with one day a week, and make sure that the neighbors are all aware. And everyone was really excited, and it was really fun to see, even the parents were really excited. I think one of the parts they were very excited about was saying that they knew their children would be tired when they got home because of the walk from the morning. And we agreed, so it was, it was a rewarding day.
And then our next one is about the youth and government program, and I want to particularly thank the council for their role this year.
I'm Michelle Timochi, here at Lancaster City Hall for the Youth and Government Expo. Let's go take a look.
It's just a great thing to see the kids come out. I really think outside the box, and really look forward to what they could do in their careers by being involved in something like this.
It's our 22nd year of doing our annual Youth and Government Day, so we have high school students here from across Lancaster. So far, we've had our orientation. At the orientation process, this is where they meet with their counterpart. It's an opportunity for them to get to know their counterpart, whether they're director or a city staff. After that, we have our Youth and Government Day. Today is our charrette process. With that, we give them a project. And basically, their project is 15th Street West, and they'll be redesigning that area.
It's a walk. There'll be more stuff inside here.
This is just for the outfits. People could probably park in there.
And boy, it's gonna be a big fountain.
We're gonna turn these two buildings out, and then just make it a long line of stops all the way down.
I like that idea, though, because you're right, people don't wanna walk along busy streets.
It's great to see students who are so engaged and so excited. You know, they have their own ways of thinking, they bring their own problem-solving abilities to it. And because they're not in it every day, they probably see possibilities that we don't see. A lot of the great discoveries that have come through history come from people that are on the edge of things, not necessarily in the middle of the profession. The other thing that I think is worthwhile is that regardless of whether they go into a local government career or not, this will help them to understand how their local governments work so that they can be productive and involve citizens.
Is there gonna be a cost difference to put the public stage where the amphitheater is, or is that just going, can you just switch that?
As a senior citizen, security is a necessity that I'm not willing to trade for convenience.
You can always choose to move if you like. I mean, come on, come on.
Of how many homeowners, their rent will go up, and how many own their houses.
Four-fifths own their houses.
I just love to see these students, how they blossomed. Even more importantly, how they understand now the process, how it works, so they definitely know that they have a word in what happens here in our community.
The students that we interacted with learned a lot. They learned what to do, what not to do, and they learned from lifelong experiences that the council has had. So it's a wonderful experience for everybody.
It's definitely a rewarding experience. I enjoyed it very much. I did it last year as a concerned citizen, and it was great seeing it from the public's eye and how much they affect it. And then I came back another year, and I got to see things from a whole new level as I previously wanted. And I wanted to go to the city manager, because as it was stated earlier, that I, my brother was a city manager, and he told me about that. He told me about things that were interesting, things that were really rewarding, and I said, "I want that, I wanna do that." So I came back to youth and government, and I got, thank God, I got the part, and it was so rewarding. Mr. Brisingen is such a great mentor, he's taught me so many things. I really like how the city of Lancaster is run, and I like how, I like how things are done, and it makes me so proud of the city.
It was so awesome just to see how the city runs, and how you can learn so much from government and leadership, or how to walk in and lead a room, as Marvin Chris was saying. It was just an awesome process.
It was a great learning experience, and I learned so much about city government. I have future plans to one day be in government, and I think this is just a great opportunity for me to learn how it works.
Thank you, everybody, for participating. It was my pleasure to work with all the participants this year.
You think government was such a great learning experience, and on behalf of everyone, I would like to thank the city of Lancaster for putting on such a great event.
And what wasn't shown was the two hours our student city council got to spend with Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Christ, I think Sandra, and they learned about a semester's worth of stuff in two hours.
I was actually surprised. I mean, here they're doing a fantasy project, that how close to real life it really was. I mean, you know, and then they come out here and they're very formal about it, but, you know, back there, it's all, it's an exciting, you know, and that's really the way it really is. I mean, it's too bad all you folks couldn't be in the back room, you know, it's where the creativity occurs. But then again, I probably say things I shouldn't. Michael Reeves?
City Clerk.
Oh, City Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and as clearly as possible, so that if city staff or the council needs to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action, action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves? Efficiency of city government. This is what you're gonna compliment us, right?
This is the last time. I wanna end it on a positive note tonight, because I wanna commend our city, and I wanna commend our Public Works Department. When I first moved up here, the sidewalk in front of my residence was all messed up. And I called the city up and asked them, "Does it belong to you, or does it belong to me? If it belongs to me, I'm gonna patch it up." City came out and patched it up, and they said, "We'll put you on a list, and we will come out and fix the sidewalk permanently some days." Well, you know, I waited five years, that's fine, I understand, we don't have the resources. And I was patient for five years, and they came out last week and fixed the sidewalk, and they were tremendous. You know, I think I'm overtaxed because my house is underwater, but we have a great city, we have great staff people, they, they were just incredible. They contacted me, they talked to me all along the way, they did a great job on the sidewalk. I contacted the father of the skateboarders down the street and read him the riot app, that if, you know, if they mess this one up, they're gonna pay for it. But I, we can be very proud of our city. For example, I called the County of Los Angeles today, and I was on the line for one hour, and they never came back to talk to me. And I talked to a private organization on the same topic, and they solved my problem in 15 minutes. That's the type of action I get from Lancaster. From the moment I walk into City Hall and talk to anybody in the City Hall, and for the courtesy that the council gives me, we have a great city, and the citizens should be very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vienna Friss?
Hello, thank you for starting my time when I got here. I really love Lancaster and Antelope Valley. I've lived here since 1947. My folks came out here, I've seen it really grow, I'm proud to be from out here. But I've been at a stroke and- But I've been at a stroke in 2001. I've been on the bus service for eight years. I've told them about my complaints I wanted you to hear. Why is it the bus service to government offices is once every hour? It's been like this for 10 years. This is prejudicial against people who need government services. Once an hour to the courthouse. It takes me three hours to go one mile on the buses from Avenue J to Avenue K. Takes me three hours. I catch the number 12 bus and I wait three hours for the number four bus. You can check this out. The bus service goes, stops at 5:00 PM every night and goes to one every hour. I left Winko at 5:15. I missed the bus. I need to go home, two miles to J and Sierra. I got home at 9:00 PM, four hours later. Again, I've seen the number 10 bus ride empty. Right down J, they wouldn't pick me up to take me one mile to Sierra Highway. They're unworkable. In Palmdale, the entire bus service down Avenue Q East to Fortieth is completely gone. They've canceled 27 buses that went to Lake Los Angeles. Their buses are now four hours between buses. This is just like Mexico. That's the way I feel. It's been like this for five years, no one listens to me. So I'd like to say they let us ride for free as a senior, but there's no buses available. I risked my life to get home. I live at J and Sierra. I'm trying to help clean up the drug era down there, area on Beach and Old Field. I'm the only regular person there and I'm trying to hold on to my values and no drugs and kindness to people and animals. And I'm seeing drugs all around me, it doesn't matter. I'm going to hold on to my property and try to have a virtuous life. Thank you very much. I would love to have good bus service sometime in this valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Vivian, can you wait after the council meeting and so I can speak with you and maybe help you on a couple of things?
All right, thank you. We don't listen to you.
We have to go to close session. Before we do, I, I went to a conference last week and it was a whole week conference. It was in Palo Alto and it was about all the latest and greatest stuff that's coming from the computer industry and the medical industry and the solar industry. And one of the speakers was, a lot of the speakers were from NASA, it was at NASA Ames is where the event took place. And there was an astronaut who was talking to us, who's in the drone program. And he was telling us how all of the drone technology is moving out of the country, goes other places. Great potential for jobs, but as soon as they, they get it up to the point where they're ready to test, they leave the country. And so the discussion went on and it occurred to us that there really needs to be a place, an urban place, meaning a city that drones can fly over. And the first city that gets that is the one who's going to get all these startups. And there's a way, I mean, this guy's an astronaut and he's telling me there's a way to do it perfectly safe, so I would like us to look into that. What would it take to get a waiver from the FAA to make Lancaster a, a place where they, where drones can fly? Because we all know they're going to be flying everywhere in 10 years. I would like to get the jobs here now. Which then led me to the thought, what, what I kept hearing from all of these scientists is how difficult it is to do anything because of government. One of the things they were really happy to hear about us being the solar capital of the universe, I just upgraded us because we got, one of the things that that has brought about is when you want to do something solar in this city, you can get it approved really fast. If you want to put solar on your house, it takes 15 minutes. Any other place in the, in the state takes a month to two months to get a permit. I mean, that's just a little difference. It's not rocket science. We're not approving something we haven't approved 1,000 times or 500 times. And it's that frame of mind that, that our staff has of looking for ways to say yes and say yes quickly that is starting to bring business here. The, and I'd like to see that go a few steps further. And so in two weeks, I'm going to put together a group that's going to do whatever we need to do to get the drones here. We'll probably work with Mojave Airborne with that and see where it goes. And I know just who I'm probably going to ask. Okay. Now we can go to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, we need to announce that we're going into closed session on the items listed on the agenda.
I was going to do it.
I'm sorry, I jumped again.
Okay. We're going to conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 to potential cases. Conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A. Do I have to list the cases? Good. Okay. For anybody who wants to stick around for us to close the meeting, you're welcome to, but that's all we're going to do when we come back. We're back in session. Mr. McEwen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9D2 concerning potential litigation, gave direction to council concerning that. The council met under Government Code Section 54956.9A and gave direction with respect to Waterhouse versus Lancaster, Lancaster versus the Housing Authority and Antelope Valley Allied Arts Association cases.
Thank you. Okay. City council and the Housing Authority meetings are adjourned until April 9, 2013 at 5:00 PM. And Carol, I'm coming home. I hope you have something for me to eat.